Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindop School District 92 Special Board Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Board Member Jordan Harret.
Present.
Board Member Erin.
Present.
Board Member Griffin.
Present.
Board Member Dawson.
Present.
Board Member Hannah.
Present.
Board Member Taylor.
Absent.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Present.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we're going to pause for a moment of silence. Please turn your cell phones to off or silence. We'd like to pause on behalf of our Lindop students. Sending good energy their way for this particular school year. Thank you very much. Moving right along to item E, public comments. Are there any public comments, Ms. Suarez?
No, ma'am.
Okay, there are none. Move right along to O, business. I need a recommendation to approve the food service contract, please.
I make a motion, Vicky Arrington here. I make a motion that the board approve the renewal of the food service contract with Series Foods for the 2020 to 2021 school year commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, in the amount of $287,148.13.
Uh, Erin, have a second.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead, Mr. Baranik.
Good evening, Board of Education, administrators, and community members. At the last board meeting, there were some questions that were asked by the board members. I did reach out to our food service provider. I spoke with the VP of Operations and just want to go through some of the questions that were asked to research and bring back for this special board meeting. Uh, number one was why the increase at CPI? Uh, the USDA in the state of Illinois, every December, get a CPI figure, and that is charged to all food service renewals. So that's an automatic 3.1% as per what the agreement is with the USDA in the state of Illinois for all food service renewals. Some of the things that I asked the VP to look into, how does the offer versus serve compare for our students with it? Shouldn't it keep the cost down, or how would that work? And he actually said that when you have serve versus offer, you have to serve everything to the students instead of having a buffet style where they can pick and choose their items. When you're serving it, you have to give every single item that is available versus the buffet style when they go through the lunch line with the in-service. The packing is actually more expensive to do for a grab and go than it is to have a buffet style on there. In the letter that the VP sent, you can clearly see that in his memo that was attached in board books, um, documents. And then, of course, we look at some of the key items that are in each lunch. The main ingredient are proteins. The meat and chicken have gone up in price. And then also, our milk has gone up in price that would be needed to distribute with all the meals. If we move to the next slide, uh, how does this impact Lindop? We did have the question as to how much would we be charged? We only get charged for the amount of meals that are prepared on an individual day. I've already been working with the food service vendor to determine, how do we ensure that we're being physically responsible and not having a lot of waste? So we have a plan in place, um, when the school year starts to address our grab and go issues with it. And then some of the other things that we got to look at is, what's the reimbursement rate for FY '21? As you can see, the breakfast went up six cents per meal, and the lunch went up 10 cents per meal. So that's a good thing for Lindop, that we'll be able to get a little bit of offsetting cost. And then, like you said, there was a potential chance of having some labor cost be less depending on how many days the district was going to serve. And as we stand right now, to give the most flexibility, and they have meals made fresh every day, we're looking at potentially serving every day, Monday through Friday with it. So there won't be a, an actual labor cost savings on it, but there may be a savings depending on how many meals that we actually serve to our Lindop students. So once again, the price that was in the, uh, resolution out there was if we were in full person, serving our 450 students for breakfast and 450 students for lunch. Like I said, we're only going to be charged per meal on each day that is prepared. And then, like I said, that is what was asked to research to verify. So I'm hoping that that will suffice the board questions from the last meeting.
Do we have any additional questions from board members at all?
No.
No.
I don't have additional questions either. Thank you so much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Hey.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along to discussion on 2020-21 Lindop calendar.
Yes, um, good evening to the board members, administrators, and any community members that might be attending. If you could go to the next slide, please. We came for approval for the calendar for the 2021 school year, and originally, the first day of students meeting with their teachers would have been the 14th, which is on Friday. However, the Illinois State Board of Education allowed, uh, the school districts an additional five days of planning. And so we wanted to front-load our planning days at the beginning, and that will happen on the 14th and the 17th. And the students will be remote learning out of school, but they will also meet their teachers on Tuesday, the 18th. Additionally, we have to serve breakfast and lunch on that Friday and Monday as well, and we will have that available for all students. That was the only update. Are there any questions?
Yes, Dr. Jackson, when you say meet their students, are you saying physically? They'll be physically present?
Via Zoom.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson.
I'm sorry, one other question. I, um, don't want to assume this, the, um, the teacher, I can't even think of it, LTA did, um, agree to this calendar adjustment?
We work on every decision, uh, concerning remote, and when we are anticipating return as a team, there is nothing, no decisions that are made in isolation. So your answer is yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Oh, if there are none. Okay, moving right along to new business.
Excuse me.
Discussion on regi- uh, registration fees.
Ms. Jordan Harret, do we vote on calendar changes or no?
We do, but she, it'll be voted on on the next board meeting?
There's no calendar changes. The dates are the same. It's just the day that the students actually, their first attendance day.
Was, is that a calendar date change?
No, the days are the same. It's just when the student's first day, when they are actually meeting with their teachers. If we want to have it for another vote, that's fine. We can, I'll put it on for.
Let's just have it for another vote.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to new business. Discussion on registration fees. This would be Dr. Jackson beginning. Uh, Mr. Baranik is supporting it, or at least giving more information.
Yes. Uh, so the background on this discussion, uh, is during the COVID-19, the families have been impacted in several ways, financially, physically, as well as emotionally. The federal government, um, has provided different municipalities, uh, funding to assist. And for school districts, um, there are certain things that we can utilize the money for. Uh, as we discussed at a prior board meeting, we received $118,000 from the CARES Act and utilized the funds for technology. Um, most of it was for devices, software, and additional security wire, firewalls, and safety. However, um, there's going to be additional items that need to be purchased as we transition to full remote, including our math and science curricula, as well as different technology and software applications. It'll be funded through the instructional services and technology departments. Uh, but some additional background information is that several universities and private institutions have reduced their tuition and fees for the upcoming school year and are providing partial refunds for the 2019-2020 school year. Next slide. Mr. Baranik?
Okay, good evening once again. Um, this is our current registration fee schedule for, um, students, our parents who are enrolling their students into Lindop. Currently, right now, we are giving the discounted registration fees that are out there. You can see from the different grade levels how they vary with it. Um, currently, families that receive TANF or SNAP benefits get a reduced fee. They go from, um, paying the full amount to just the technology fee. That's the only part that wouldn't be waived with the fees. And with that being said, we were looking at what were some things that we could potentially maybe assist our families in the Lindop community with, with these registration fees with it. The proposal that we have, uh, tonight to go over with the board is, typically, a family spends somewhere between 50 to 100 per child. And what if we were to help these families out with supplying them with instructional, um, items that are universal amongst grades? And use that during the remote session? And then we're also, we thought about it again and said, well, what if we supplied some help with both during the remote and the in-person, uh, potentially starting in January? So if we move to the next slide, this was an idea that was kind of thought up to try to create some uniformity, um, and help assist with it as we're in our remote session and take some of the pressure off of the parents. The idea was to create universal supply kits, and they would be all tailored to the requests that the teachers have on their supply list for their individual grade levels. So just looking at the clusters, it would be grades K through three would have their own unique supply kit. Grades four and five would have a unique supply kit, and grades six through eight would have a unique supply kit. This way, like you said, we're getting stuff at bulk pricing, which would be less than what parents potentially would be paying out in the community to get it, and they're getting items that are required. So if we were to try to keep the uniformity with it, we think this would be a great way to help support the Lindop parents who are out there and who are having some difficulties during this very hard times with COVID. If we move to the next slide, we had to do some additional research on what exactly the district, um, takes in with registration fees? And how is it compared to each grade level and what the cost is on it? What you're looking at on this screen here is an estimate as to what I think would be the amount of fees that the district would take in on an annual basis. So I took last year's enrollment in each grade level and just advanced them, and then put a placeholder in for kindergarten and pre-K with it to show overall what we would collect with our registration fee and the technology fees. So if every parent in the Lindop School District paid all their fees on it, the total would be $43,000. Out of that $43,000, the tech fee would be about 11, and then the registration fee would be about $31,000. I also looked at what is our SNAP and TANF rate versus parents who pay? So then you have to look at who's paying the full amount and who's paying the reduced fees, the tech fee only. The percentage that we have out there, um, trending is 60-40. 60% of the parents pay the, the full amount, and 40% pay the reduced. But for our purposes, looking at this, if everybody paid the $30 tech fee, that's roughly $11,000. With the remaining, then, the 60% would pay the registration fee, gets me to about $19,000 that you would collect. So those two combined would be roughly $30,000 annually that you would get in fee collection. Now, as of today, we have 131 students registered, and we have collected a total of all the fees collected, $17,909. So that includes registration fees, tech fees, graduation fees. It's just all fees. And as a reminder, the district picks up the processing fee for any parent that pays with credit card. We do not have in-person registration, so all of our fees that we have collected are credit card fees. They've paid with credit card. Which then led me to say, okay, how does in-person versus remote? How is that going to impact? What are the cost differences with it? So I worked with Mr. Ellis Q to try to get a quick, um, cost analysis of what exactly are we paying for within our technology budget? So the various items that are out there, as you can see, we have Chromebooks, teacher computers, a server, a firewall. We had to update our fiber optics to push out more applications and have better bandwidth. Then we have Chromebook, um, replacement bags, replacement chargers. We don't want to give out bags that are, how do I put this, slightly used and not, uh, up to the standard that we want. So we had to get quite a few replacement bags on that. And then, of course, you still have your, your routine stuff, like some office computers need to be changed. Some administrator computers need to be changed out to get upgraded. Uh, we do have students at Pace that do need computers and additional software apps and programs. And they're doing remote, so we have to assist with that, too. And then, of course, we have a new website that is going out. And if we don't have the website, we can't push out the information to our parents as to key dates and everything. So what I tried to do on this is kind of capture what are our, what are our costs just for technology? And kind of see where that stands as what we spend per student on it. So going through this, I came up with about $300,000 in software expenses or technology-related expenses. We're going to use CARES Act money, that's the grant, to offset 118,000 of it, and then offset some more with our technology fees that we collect. And then I still think it would be very, very beneficial to have supply kits go out to the parents. So in this figure, I have a cost breakdown as to what it would be for the in-person and the remote cost. So roughly, it came out to be $35 each going through some of the supply list, try to get an estimate that the instructional piece would be $35, and then the non-instructional piece would be $35, which would help the parents with it. And then, on the one side, I have then the registration fee just kind of offsetting some more of the technology cost, which would come out to per student cost, roughly 423. And then, if I didn't have registration fees that went, um, towards this, it would be 467. So I just wanted to give a quick snapshot of kind of what our fee structure looks like, what we collect, and just kind of how that's going to offset a little bit of our technology costs. Dr. Jackson, I don't know if you have anything else that you want to chime in with on that?
Uh, you know what? If we could go to the next slide. One more. Okay. And so for health and safe, life safety items for 2021, uh, typically, the funding comes from our capital funds, uh, funds, capital projects, Fund 60, and life safety Fund 90. So that's about a total of $173,713. Um, the projects that we have upcoming are the HVAC controls, uh, which will be 300,000. The, the good news is that we have that offset by about 50,000 through the maintenance grant. Thank you, Mr. Baranik. And so that only leaves, um, a balance of $250,000 that would have to be utilized from fund balances or in the event of that there was not enough, it would have to be through a bond issuance. Also, the roofing project comes about 1.2 million, I'm sorry, 1.2 million dollars. The chiller is 250,000, and the unit replacements are about 435,000. And again, that would come from the fund balances or through a bond issuance. Uh, the associated fees for each project as well include 10% design, 10% contingency, and 8% for the architect engineering fee. Can you go to the next? The good news is that we have some cost savings. Uh, and so the after-school activities and athletics up to January, we have a savings on that. Our transportation for field trips and also traveling to and from games, uh, the professional development and Board of Education travel, as well as food service and, um, staff vacancies, because we are able to fill the vacancies internally for now. So that's some very, very good news. Any questions?
Just, um, does any board members have any questions? Just in other words.
I had a question.
Go right ahead.
But, um, this is Board Member Brian Dawson. Uh, and this was just a general question to Mr. Baranik. I, I remember, uh, in the spring, you had a concern that because the state was, um, pushing back state tax payments, that we might have an issue where they were going to be late then paying the school as far as the, the money we wanted. And I wasn't sure whether any of these grants, um, were, uh, was money that was already in-house? Or is it anything that we, we might have to wait on from the state?
That's a very good question. Um, I will tell you that, um, the big, biggest piece to the state funding is our evidence-based funding, and that's our largest, um, amount that we get from the state. And they are making their payments on that one. The grants that we have through the state, those are on a reimbursement basis. We are going to get that money. It just depends on when they release it. So that's the question that's always, you know, out there with when you're dealing with the state. As far as the maintenance grant, um, that's a reimbursable dollar for dollar. So once you spend more than 50,000 on it, you put that in for reimbursement, and you get your, your funds on that. So the biggest piece, like you said, is all the state stuff is reimbursed. So we have to spend it first and then put in for reimbursement. We don't know what the state is going to be, um, I guess, we won't, we don't know what their reimbursement timeframe will be. Sometimes they make a couple payments to please all the districts, and then they wait to the very last minute to release, at the very end of the year, a couple more payments. So we'll have to see what their payment schedule looks like. But like you said, the biggest piece that, uh, the positive that we have is, is the evidence-based funding is fully funded, and we'll be getting that money. That's our largest stake that we have for our revenue from the state.
Okay, thank you. And I know that, uh, we have a, a healthy fund balance now, but I guess the concern was that, you know, once we start spending this money and we're kind of crossing our fingers and hoping they pay us back, we may actually run into a situation where the fund balance is low, but we've committed the money and we're unsure when we're going to get it back. Is that kind of where we would be at?
I think the biggest thing that, um, everyone needs to kind of see the big picture on is that there is some significant cost coming up within the next, uh, two to three years from our life safety, um, survey that was done by the architect. If you, we got to keep that in the back of our minds, that, you know, there is some significant cost that are in the pipeline that will need to be addressed. And like you said, you really only have two options to pay for those particular projects. You either use fund balance, or you look at a potential bond issuance in the future.
Thank you.
So just before we close this discussion, the recommendation from this discussion is, is what's the recommendation? Or is that a, appropriate to kind of talk about that right now, Dr. Jackson? Just to, just a recommendation of which direction at this point? It just, thank you so much, so we can talk and understand.
Yes, and so our recommendation would be to cover both the in-person and the remote supplies, which is what Mr. Baranik reviewed in the spreadsheet. Can we go back to that slide, please? Mr. Baranik, can you go over that cost again, just so they can see?
Yes, if we look at the supply kits for what we're estimating of our estimate for total Lindop enrollment of 437, once everyone finally registers and we get everyone, uh, where we need to be, it would be $35 for the remote and then $35 for the in-person. So a total of $70 would be the amount spent on these kits to help all parents. And like you said, it would create, uh, uniformity and get the items that would be necessary for both remote and if potentially we come back in January for the in-person. This would be, um, definitely helpful. We can get better pricing than what would be out there, uh, for the parents, and we would just have to put these kits together and distribute them, uh, potentially during our grab and go, um, times that we will have available for all the parents.
So in other words, the district is helping the families, every family, every student, with their school supplies, which means that that's one thing that they don't have to run around and think about or pay for?
Yes.
Okay. Any thoughts about that, uh, Board of Education members? Any comments?
I'm gonna be leaving the meeting shortly, because I have another meeting. Unfortunately, that complex, uh, that starts at 6:00. So may I make a quick comment before I leave?
Thank you, Vicky. Go right ahead, Ms. Arrington, go ahead.
I do support it when I look at the large picture. I, I, I like the fact that we have the ability to be of assistance. Um, students and parents have gone through a lot as well. And I think it's a little, a little, some thoughtfulness to give back to them in some kind of way. And as long as it's in our budget, I, um, feel, I'm, I just support the, the recommendation to supply the, the, uh, to give the supply kits.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other Board of Education members?
Yeah, uh, I'll chime in.
Yeah, I'll chime in. Board Member Hannah. I just want to say that I think that's a great, a great tool, a great movement to at least give back to our parents. We, we never know who or how they've been affected by this new normal that we're going through now. So I, I think it's wonderful that Lindop's even considering helping our families get these babies back to school. So kudos to the team.
Board Member Williams Wolfert, I echo what my colleague said as well. I just have a couple of questions. So, and thank you to the team. You know, this is really forward-thinking in terms of supporting our families. I'm just curious, I think I heard the number of 130 families thus far have registered. And I thought I saw a number of 437, yeah, somewhere for students, which, I don't know, that number seems kind of low considering schools starting in, what, about two weeks now? Is there any initiatives to support family registration? And will families, will late fees be waived this year in an effort to try to support families a little more? I don't know if there will be a late fee. Typically, I think around August, there has been in the past.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Wolfert, could you repeat the last part? I apologize.
That's okay. I know, it was just a lot in that question. Typically by now, I think I heard the number of about 130 families of registered students thus far. And I think it's approximately 400 and something students. I'm just wondering what efforts is the team engaging in to try to get more families to register? And if there's a late fee, because I don't know, I think I remember like August being the date that late fees started something, but I'm not sure if that's the case this year or if that's being waived.
Yes, there is. So thank you for asking that question. There has been a significant amount of work and I think it's closest to the building. And so, Dr. Spalding, will you chime in on just everything that we've done to try to get families to register?
Absolutely. Good evening to everyone. Ms. Dr. Jackson, can, can you guys hear me? I want to make sure this mic is good to hear you.
Okay, great.
We have been pushing registration. The initiative is a bit different this year, but it's proven to be successful so that we can ensure everyone's safety. So the registration this year for the first time in Lindop history is remote. And it's something that is going pretty smoothly. We're meeting each week to make sure that we're supporting parents and have office hours to help parents be able to navigate the website. We've sent a series of blasts out for the last week or so. Every parent who has not registered has gotten that blast as of last Saturday. I think there were close to 300 people who received the blast. And by that Monday, we had 70 new enrollment emails. So that works really well. And each day, we've had more enrollment emails. So the front office is processing registrations, excuse me, at a rapid pace. They do have to verify the proofs of residencies that parents upload. And sometimes if those documents are not uploaded, then the front office will communicate back to that family what they need so that we can get that information as soon as possible. So even though we're at 138, I think someone said, they're probably about 50 plus in the queue that have begun the process but need to finish affidavit forms or upload other documents. The other great thing is that the fee structure that you saw is separate from the registration. So parents do not have to pay when they register. That payment happens afterwards. So they do not have to worry about, I can't go online to register because I don't have my credit card right now. I don't have the funds. The registration can be complete without paying. And then the payment happens separately. So we're working extremely hard to keep promoting it. It's been posted on Facebook every day. It's posted in our internal dojo page every day. Today, we had personal phone calls were made to every parent that was not registered. Ms. Wilson came to the office to assist with that. And Ms. Tough and Ms. Lewis are working extremely hard to process that. I want to give a shout out to Dr. Betts and Mr. Ellis Q, who worked extremely hard to set up the remote registration system. But yes, Ms. Williams offered, as Dr. Jackson said, we're doing everything we can to just encourage those parents. Unfortunately, historically, some people do not really quote unquote get it until school starts. And they're like, oh, school's in session, let me get my child registered. So we recognize that there probably will be a small population of parents who still do that. But we are pushing that before Institute, our teachers will be able to have their class rosters and send out invitations to their parents via dojo so that we can get the school year off and started with a lot of excitement and full engagement.
Thank you. Any additional questions at all?
Yeah, I just had one more question. Dr. Jackson, the, the other slide that was there about the roofing job and all that stuff. So I, I take for granted that those are the next things listed on the safety list. And these items will be completed at the end of this fiscal year or during Christmas break? Or is there any projected time when they'll get done?
Board Member Williams Wolfert, the only project that probably will be started will be the HVAC project that will be going back out to bid probably February, March time to try to get our pricing, see if everything comes, comes in as projected. Remember, we rejected the first one on that because it was too high. And I've already spoke to the architect on that. And he also said that it should come in around that 300 mark, not the 380 something that the original one came in. So that will be going out to bid, but these were just items that we need to keep on the radar that need to be addressed coming up here in the near future, meaning under five years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional questions from board members? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, boy, public comments. Are there any additional public comments, Ms. Suarez?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we are going to go into executive session. I'd like to make the motion to, that the board go into closed session under ILCS 120-2C1 and 2 to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the public body and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives at 6:08 PM. May I have a second, please?
A second, here.
And a roll call, please?
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wolfert?
Yay.
Board Member Joanna Hira?
Yay.
And Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, administrative team.
Yep, great job on the parent supply kits.
Thank you.